Yes, yes.
It is now six o'clock. Are you able to broadcast?
Yes.
Okay, so we up? All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission. We would like to start by calling the meeting to order and do the roll call.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner La Micah. Commissioner Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
And Chair Silva.
Present.
Oh, let's um call for Commissioner La Micah one more time because he has just arrived.
Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
All right, item three is the review of the agenda. This is a time where items that have arisen after the seventy-two hour posting deadline could be added to the agenda at this time. Do we have any items that need that kind of attention? No. All right, moving on to item number four. Uh, this is a public comment period for members of the public wishing to come forward and address any issue uh related to the city of Seaside, but an issue that is not on tonight's agenda. So if the item's on tonight's agenda, stand by and will comment at that time. But if anybody wishes to come forward for general seaside issues, now would be the time to come forward. You'll have three minutes to share and um need to state your name at the podium. Doesn't look like we have any motion, so we're going to move on to item number five, which is our business items. First item of business is architectural review application AR twenty-four dash zero five Hugo Perez applicant and Myra Pangillian owner request architectural review approval for a proposed two-story addition in second story deck to an existing single-family residence at eighteen twenty-five Yosemite Street in the single-family residential RS twelve zoning district. And this is the one we continued to tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Rocha, take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners. Beth Rocha, Senior Planner, presenting this project for your consideration. So this was originally presented at July twenty-fourth. It was continued by the commission to tonight um by a vote. The commission wanted the owner applicant to be here to speak to some of the public comments that were made. Just a reminder, I'm going to quickly go through the original presentation. The subject property is on the left circled in red. The properties with number two on them are existing two-story homes. Uh, footprints refers to the topographical elevation that runs through those respective properties showing the east side of Yosemite to be at a slightly higher grade than the west side. Public notice and the three hundred foot noticing uh were completed as required. Staking and flagging as well was completed as required. Some images of the staking and flagging as a reminder going from south to north on Yosemite. So second story addition. Um, both remodeling of the first floor and the second story, so six hundred and sixty-six square feet total. Three thirty-three per floor, as well as a second story deck, which you can see there in the image, uh, the lighter shade of gray towards the back with the addition in the darker shade of gray. All portions of the addition observing the required setbacks of the zone and as well as compliant with the proposed floor area ratio and the proposed lot coverage of the zone. First floor plan, as a reminder, there is an existing sunroom that's being demoed, that's single story. This is what's going in its place. You can see the staircase going up to the second floor, which is where you also access the open deck. Moving through the colors and materials, they are choosing some new colors and materials compared to what exists, but the existing will also be made to match the proposed. And here's further details, light fixture that will go outside as well as the railing. Moving through the elevations, uh, in the single-family zone, you're allowed to go up to a height of twenty-four feet maximum. This is proposed at a maximum height of nineteen-four. Moving through the elevations, let's see. A proposal in its entirety. A couple of sequo findings, one for the addition not be more than fifty percent of the existing square footage and the second for the deck, which is an accessory structure, both being exempt from sequo and landing again on the recommendation of staff unchanged as an approval of this application.
Thank you, Beth. We have any questions for staff? Okay, so appreciate that very much. Um, we continued this the last time just because there were comments that were of concerned neighbors and I believe if I recall correctly, we said, you know, it may or may not make any difference to our ultimate decision, but we we prefer the opportunity to have the applicant be here to answer some of those questions, respond to them. Um, so if the applicant is present, we want to invite the applicant to come forward. We'll give you five minutes to present and then maybe state if there's further questions from us and then we'll close your time and then we'll open it to public comment. So um, please come forward, introduce yourself by name and and um and then you can have some time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, good evening, Commissioners, members and staff. Um, my name is Hugo Perez. I'm the designer in this um two-story addition and second story wood deck attached to the existing single-family residence located eighteen twenty-five uh Yosemite. Um, sorry, forgot my glasses. It's like it's it's the reading is um, yeah. Um, the as you know, stated bit here, the addition takes place on the rear um house um located on the west side facing the bay. Uh, the lower plan consists of open space and half back with the stairs taking up to the second uh floor um into the access to the wood deck. Basically, the concept design for this addition provides with the same aesthetics of the existing building as stated in the presentations in the neighborhood buildings. We are, I'm incorporating the uh traditional architectural style of existing and also, you know, pertaining to the neighborhoods uh along with these features, materials and the character. Um, where the height as stated is the um under twenty feet and also um it complies with the RS twelve basically. Um, so in conclusion, the addition incorporates the uh the materials, features and characters for the existing buildings and the neighborhoods. Uh, it also in in integrates and incorporates architectural style you know, that goes along with that neighborhood. So um it's as as you notice in that huge um uh addition that it doesn't take the entirely footprint of the existing house, so it's just which is focusing as as the minimum that give us access to to the second floor, so. Um, with that, I can follow up with any questions you may have on that.
Yes, okay, thank you. So yeah, stay present for a minute and um I know we have a question over here and then we'll go through other commissioners, give them an opportunity.
Actually, it might sound a question, it's a kudo. Thank you, beautiful looking drawing. I'm glad to see that the homes in that area are starting to come up and look like they should for the area. But very nice job as far as I'm concerned.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
Uh, my only question would be, uh, if you had a chance to listen to the last meeting, uh, there were a lot of complaints about the the addition. Uh, it meets code, you know, we've talked about the law, all those kinds of things. But we as a commission are responsible for taking into account the general plan, which is we got beautiful bay views and we want to keep those as much as we can, allowing for development. So in your design, were you thinking at all, if you were up the hill and you had those homes above you, what would you like to see? Would you, did you give it any thought at all? Or could you basically just look at, I want a sunroom and I'm going to put it right here?
Yeah, of course, it in the design, um, my design mind is always incorporating, you know, the neighborhood and the and the owners as well to to try to sort of please or 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 not to invade so much of the privacy. Uh, if you notice on the on the one of the presentations, the the second houses on the upper level, they're like eight to sixteen feet higher. Which uh if you notice that the width of the additions going from the south to the northwest is only thirty feet, feet, the width of it. And the bay, it's, you know, fifty thousand feet to the width to depending where you go at, so. This design, it's it's, we are to the minimum of providing the access to go upstairs. If you notice also on the design of the second level, we have an L shape, meaning that we're not going astray or we're not taking the whole straight uh steps required to go to the second step. So that's that was part of the design concept that I decided to take as minimal as, you know, we can, so we can go to the second floor. And and with that is, I think we're on the just limited on for us to um oversize the additions with.
Other Commissioners, I think. And then.
Good question on that, but I'm glad too because you kept it below the twenty-four.
Yeah, it is.
It's nineteen feet, so to me, that kudos on you, that.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, well, I think that concludes our questions for you unless the owner wants to say anything as well. If you would like to, please come forward, we'll give you a couple moments, you can introduce yourself as well and then um and then we'll open to general public comment.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, um Commissioners. My name is Myra and I'm the owner of our the property in eighteen twenty-five Yosemite. Um, ever since, you know, li- like I see the the ocean, it's really beautiful and working like eight hours or sixteen hours almost every day um at CHAM, um nursing assistant, monitor tech. Me Fabillon, like when you get home stressed, tired, like at least having coffee and see the ocean. It's really beautiful and of course I don't want my neighbors to get mad at me or upset and I don't want to block their view. I just want a little bit of the the ocean, of the lights at night, relaxing after a long time of working in a hospital, you know, I'm I'm nervous, I'm sorry, yes, just, you know. I love I I love the the view, I love the ocean, I love um God's creation, I just want to have a little bit of it. Not taking everything.
Thank you, Myra. Any questions for the owner? Okay, thank you for sharing, appreciate it. Um, that's all we have for you then right now.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, we're going to open the public comment to anybody in the public wishing to address this item. If you do want to address this item, please come to the podium, state your name, we'll give you three minutes to to share.
Good evening and thanks for having me. My name is Chris Cogan and I live at eight year Bubuena Court, which is directly east of the proposed project. And I was here last time to give the opportunity of the owner and the designer to um address um their design. And I um I pretty much stand where I did in the last meeting. My exception to it is that that the um design is is purposed not for additional housing, but for a sunroom to gain a view of the bay. And unfortunately, um it impedes my same in doing so. Now, let me just be um fair about this. I totally understand why somebody would want to build into the view so they can enjoy it, especially after coming home from a hard day's work. Um, I was hoping perhaps that we could talk about a a little bit of a uh compromise mainly with the roof design. And the roof design is the only thing that impedes my view, where the horizontal flagging is, I have no problem with. The picture that was shown earlier of the two-story buildings on the opposite side of the street, I do not believe is correct. I mean, I've lived there for almost three decades, so I can't have a good idea. And uh they're mostly one-story buildings in front of me, which is directly, I'm directly east of of that project. And so my my thought was that if I could work with the owners, uh, the Architectural Review Board and whoever else might be concerned on the perhaps um uh reconsideration of the roof plan, why then I think that that would be a win for everyone. So that would be all I really had to say tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Janet Nazzavito again. Pretty much ditto what Chris said. Um, but I I too work all day long and I bought my house for the view. Um, uh, you know, the I I understand totally what you want, but yeah, the neighbor thing is a two-way street. I'm, you know, it works both ways. And um I just think like what Chris said, it would be great if we could find a compromise. You know, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period and we're going to bring the discussion back to this panel and um start with Commissioner La Micah, anything you want to share?
No, no, at this time.
Mr. Owens?
I totally understand where the other residents are coming from, but unfortunately, what we base our look is by the code and they've stayed below the heights by by five feet. So to me, that's that right there is a give that the architect has already gave us by not going to the twenty-four foot mark. You know, that our deed says that we can't go to, so. Unfortunately, looking at this from code standard, there's nothing wrong with it. For us to hold it back would be wrong.
Mr.?
I I agree with Commissioner said and also I point out that
there's there's the reason why you're building uh a second story, it doesn't have to be tied to increasing the number of people that can live in your house. As far the far as that goes, a sunroom can also be converted into a guest room uh very easily. So it's, I don't think that's particularly relevant. Um, I do feel that there were considerations made about trying to not totally block the view of the neighbors with the cutouts on either side. And also with the, as mentioned, the reduced um height from the maximum twenty-four feet, so I I see no grounds actually to uh look against this.
Yeah, I agree in that uh the state law is clear. It was just not much way around it. We have no quote-unquote right to a view. I do really appreciate our cities planning or um general plan, which says we need to take it into account. And I think the applicant has, uh, they could have easily done the entire space. They're used, I don't know the percentage, you know, maybe fifty percent. Um, but there's plenty of views to the to the north and the south of the sunroom. Uh, it's not, it's well under code, uh, so to say no would be very difficult for me.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I I have to echo a a lot of those points, notwithstanding the fact that we understand the concerns of neighbors. Um, but as Commissioner Evans mentioned, the state gives no rights to private views and um and legally, we cannot consider private views. We can only consider public views when we approve or disapprove of a project. And as Commissioner Evans stated, our general plan does, however, encourage us to consider views and it does discourage um an addition that goes two stories on the whole width of the house and you haven't done that. You brought the ends in on each side. We don't take up the entire space, the massing is modest and we're well under the height restriction that is allowed. So the application is completely compliant in every regard. At that said, I would I would totally entertain a motion that approves the project, but also gives the applicant some latitude if they wanted to bring the roof down a little bit by the time they come to building plans. Now, they don't have to, they don't have to. And I want to be real clear, they wouldn't have to because there's no issue of compliance, but that is something that they could do and I think if we approved it with that allowance, um if they chose to, i- i- it it may not make good design sense, but if they chose to make an adjustment between now and building permit, that might temper the the, you know, irritation of the neighbors a little bit and keep things neighborly. So um that said, I would welcome uh a motion if anybody has one.
I agree with you on this. And when we look at the height, we're only looking at nine foot six per floor. Most floors are eight foot before you get to the interstitial, before the next floor. So to me, at this height that that the architect has done, he's more than tried to, you know, I agree, make everybody happy, but um I make a motion that we approve architectural review application AR twenty-four dash zero five.
Second. All in favor?
Um, I.
Any discussion? Oh, do we have, sorry, do we have any discussion?
Did did we want to make a friendly amendment to give the applicant the option of adjusting the height?
It's not an obligation.
Okay, I thought about that before I made this and that's why I said you're only at nine foot six per floor and each of these, it's eight foot just to the ceiling. Then we've got to have the flooring for the next floor above it to support it. So to me, they've done their job. They, I I can't see them coming down any further.
Could I add to?
So no, no friendly.
Hold on a second, we've got a a comment from staff.
Um, maybe just to kind of bring that, bring up that point and maybe you address. Maybe um if there was such an amendment, it could be the commission could approve the roof as proposed or end with an alternative that a flat roof or a roof of lower pitch would also be acceptable. Just to kind of throw that out there. Yeah.
And and I I I sense you don't even like that idea.
No, I don't because I I already see that we're down way below the heights. And so if to take a flat roof, it you're you're not going to gain anything.
No, I get you.
You're you're still got that deck above that's going to go.
The motion is made and he doesn't want to amend the emotion. So and we have a second to to the motion and at that point, I think what we need to do is we need to devote on as is, we can say yea or nay.
Right.
And if it we say nay, we can come up with a revised uh.
Sure can. And may I add, I, if we approve this, there's nothing stopping them from before they get to the final plans to amend it themselves. We don't have to put it in.
That's true.
Actually, it would have to match what is in the plans right here. That's why I was saying.
Oh, okay, I'm wrong.
If um that's what I'm saying is that the amendment could say that basically if they come in and they say they want to change the roof pitch, you guys have already pre-approved it, but if they came in with a flat roof, we would say no.
You gotta go back through the process.
You gotta go back, right.
Okay. Then I will re-request a friendly amendment. Feel free to say no. No, okay, okay.
So let's vote on the motion as it stands. All in favor? I.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, um, the motion passes four to one. So um congratulations on your approval. At this point, um, an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the city council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. So that concludes the item and we're going to move on to item number B, use permit application UP two zero two four dash zero seven Melinda Sue Ward, property owner and applicant requests use permit approval to require to reduce required parking for a new two hundred square foot addition to an existing one thousand sixty-eight square foot dwelling at seventeen thirty-six Flores Street in the RS twelve single-family residential zoning district. Staff, where is yours?
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Eric Azrael, Assistant Planner, and I'll be presenting for this use permit. This is for a two hundred square foot addition, first story to a single-family residence and the use permit itself is to reduce the required parking. We'll get into uh what, why we need to do that, but this is for to reduce the required parking to the single existing garage space. Located at seventeen thirty-six Flores, uh, pretty much entirely single-family homes in this area. I will draw your attention that there is no alley that will become important. This is owned, single-family residential, the existing residence is one thousand sixty-eight square feet. And this is what the site plan will look like. Um, can we remove the zoom? Thank you. So the garage is going to be located over here and the addition is being proposed in the rear. This project does have some history. We did uh send out a notice of intent to approve to approve it ministerially. There was a request for a public hearing received, but there were no details or no reason given for that objection. Did receive public comment after the deadline to request a public hearing and that has been included uh in your packets. Uh, the reason we are here is for the required parking. Anything that is up to one thousand two hundred square feet does not require any additional parking, but once we transition into a new category, which is over twelve hundred square feet, it requires one covered and one uncovered parking space. So therefore, increasing from one thousand sixty-eight to one thousand two hundred sixty-eight means that we need one additional uncovered parking space. And there are required findings to approve the use permit uh that there is a structure with non-conforming parking, which this is, that is proposed for rehabilitation, which is the addition, and that the structural location or topography render the requirement unreasonable. We do not need to document the need for fewer spaces because this is not a commercial project, this is residential. And then we have the common findings for all these permits, that the proposed use is allowed, that it's consistent with the general plan, compatible with the vicinity, that the site is physically suitable and that the project will not be materially detrimental or injurious. And this is the existing parking highlighted in red. That is the garage. We have one existing parking space. And the area where we could put any parking is either occupied or inaccessible. The space in front of this garage is about thirty-one feet, which is not long enough for a parking space that is not on the setback. And the rear is accessible. I'm sorry, the rear is inaccessible. Well, just for context, this is the existing floor plan. Uh, you can see that the deck in the back is what is going to be replaced. And we're just doing an extension to the bedroom.
Quick question. Quick question, a heavy hatching on the right side of the deck, is that just accidental, or is there like a trellis there or something?
There is nothing indicated on the plans of any difference.
Okay.
And then this is the proposed floor plan with that addition. On the west elevation, this is what is visible from the street, it does not change. The east elevation, this is what is visible from the rear, and this is the portion that has changed. From the north, the side. And from the south. This project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act uh because this would be a minor alteration in land use limitations. It does not change the land use or the density, and the average slope is less than twenty percent. And the dwelling itself uh is exempt class one because it is an addition of less than fifty percent. And the uh but that structure with non-conforming parking has an unreasonable parking requirement is because this location is impossible to build. Staff recommends the commission approve the use permit.
There was um, there was no front yard setback dimension on your site plan. I'm just curious if we know how big the front yard setback is and how much of that how much the driveway is outside of the public right away, just out of curiosity.
Thirty one feet from here to here.
Oh, it is thirty one feet, and is it somewhat steep, though? Or is it reasonably flat?
It is fairly flat.
Okay.
So they are allowed to park a car here.
We just can't count it.
We just can't count it.
Aware of that, but in some instances, there's only been fifteen feet or sixteen feet or eighteen feet, in which case the tailgate of the car is hanging out into the driveway. Thirty one feet is actually quite a large amount of driveway.
In this instance, we are three feet away from not even needing a use permit.
Good to know, thank you. Okay, any questions, Staff? Yes, sir.
Yeah, and thank you, because I was on the same thing with the parking right there at the front, because thirty one feet, what is the width? I mean, obviously, it was a garage, it was a driveway to a garage, so it has to be of equal width, it'll hold a car in a problem. Other than it's just not meeting criteria numbers.
Certainly, I do not have that information.
It's it's actually wider than than the garage door, so yeah, not wide enough for two, but it's wide enough for one. Yeah, but the record show he's showing a photograph.
It's wide. His his photograph's three Ds, yours is flat. But thank you for that, yeah, but that that was my only question.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions of staff before we open the public comment? Okay, all right, we'd like to invite the applicant or applicant representative to come up and share with us. Uh please state your name, you'll have five minutes to share with us, and then we might ask questions.
So I do have, my name is Melinda Ward, I'm the owner, and I do have some pictures for you guys.
If you would share them with um staff, one of staff, and then they can pass them around to us. Dominique, she's staff too, so that's she's not a random person trying to take them from you. She's like boss lady staff.
So that was just to show you, I think your question is, can we park an additional vehicle in the driveway? And as you can see, we have a car in the garage and we have that second vehicle to the side. Um there's only two of us that live in the house, we're not increasing capacity. We're just trying to make it a master bedroom where we can fit a closet and stuff for two people, because obviously, these rooms are very small, so that's the purpose of this. Um we do have the truck that's parked in front too, that we utilize the street space, but it's in front of our house. So those are the three vehicles we have, we will not be increasing capacity of anything of car wise or people.
And and what I can see from the picture is you can park a car in the driveway and still get the car in and out, so it's not even a tandem parking scenario.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I mean, y- y- your situation frankly is a lot better than a lot of the ones we see here, so. Okay, well, but I want, I don't want to get ahead of myself. Are we revealing our hand a little bit here? Any questions to the applicant, guys? Okay, thank you very much for sharing, we'll open it up to public comment. If if anybody in the public wishes to comment on this item, we have three minutes to do so, please state your name. Okay, seeing nobody coming up, we're going to close our public comment period. And I just want to um mention for the record that there were two emails that were received. Uh one of them just says, no, or you know, we don't approve, we object, and gave no reason for it. And the other person said, um, I refuse to approve it, not that it's their decision to make, but they they said, I don't agree building a house as big as this next to mine. And I was puzzled that when has anybody thought a twelve hundred and sixty eight square foot house is so big? I I would really be curious to find out how big that house is, the person who wrote this. But that said, I understand that some people are just emotional about um uh about change. Um and there was a question on this one about power lines and property lines or fences not being clear. Um again, it's not, I think, really that a city issue on that, that's a civil issue between the parties. If there is a question about it, or it's PG&E and PG&E season, so I'm not sure that that's relevant for our discussion either. That said, um do we have comments or questions from the other Commissioners?
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Great, we should have had this at the very beginning. Like the chair said, it's not a tandem parking. To me, this is way better than what we've seen. You know, as far as we've seen where that little Honda or Toyota, whatever that little car is. We've seen it where there's no space right there, your wall's right on this side of your driver's door. So to me, this especially for, what is it, is it two hundred square foot addition? Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other comments?
Uh I find this to be almost a model example of why it's good that we are allowed to have exceptions to the code. Then uh the situations uh happen like this, where you you add a little to the house and it goes over it. Um the situation itself hasn't changed, it'll be the same number of people, the same number of rooms, and the same parking in front of the garage that was there before. That's that quite easily can handle two cars in most cases, so I I see no reason to to deny this.
Commissioner Evans, anything? Commissioner, I got, yeah, I just want to echo that, I mean, we we've seen, and we understand we have small lots in Seaside, and we've seen people shoehorn more square footage in smaller space. I just don't even understand why there's any objection to this, because it doesn't change the front elevation of the house at all. They have an ample backyard where they're simply expanding one bedroom, and it's where there's already a deck footprint to begin with. And they have frankly, a a lot more generous parking options than we have seen when we've made exceptions in the past. So I I agree wholeheartedly, I'm fully for it.
I agree with the rest of my Commissioners on this, it um, when we look at this, it's it's going to be an add to the uh, anything that we do to these homes is an add to our neighborhoods. So I make a motion that we approve U P twenty twenty four dash zero seven.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have unanimous, oh, and any opposed, none? Okay, so we have unanimous approval, congratulations on your approval. And I do have to read that um if anybody wishes to appeal, an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts, and the basis for the appeal, appeals are to be addressed to the city, to the city council, shall be filed with the city clerk, and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. That concludes item uh B, so we're going to move on to item C, which is Master Sign Program Application M S P twenty twenty four dash zero one. Frank Conte, property owner, and Dillian, Dylan Ferguson, applicant, request approval of a master sign program to allow for the construction of on-premises signs at the multi-tenant building located at sixteen thirty two Del Monte Boulevard in the automotive regional commercial zoning district.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is Eric Azrael, Assistant Planner, and I'll be presenting M S P twenty four dash zero one. We are here concerned with on-premise signs for a two-tenant property, which, because it is a two-tenant property, it does require a master sign program. We are located at sixteen thirty two Del Monte Boulevard, uh outlined here in yellow. I will note that this little parcel is their parking, and this is con- consists of two parcels here. We'll go a little bit into the zoning and what's surrounding this area. But they are two parcels at a total of twenty thousand square feet. And we are in the automotive regional commercial zone. And these are the zones nearby, we have regional commercial in purple, we have automotive regional commercial in this orange, and the West Brother Urban Village, so we are going to have a mix of uses nearby, although it's still majority automotive. As we see here, we have uh two auto repairs. Right next, next door to the north, we have an auto repair, we have a car wash, as well as a restaurant and a couple of cafes in the immediate area. So there is a lot going on. This is for a new M S P, there is no existing M S P on the site, and there are four well sign locations that are proposed. And these are the four A, B, C, and D, and that nomenclature is repeated throughout. And I will point out while we're here on this slide, the angle that the building makes with Del Monte Boulevard. It does not have a clear uh straight approach to the road, it is at an angle. So if you are coming uh northbound this way on Del Monte Boulevard, you would only see D. If you're coming southbound, you'd only see A, B, and C, but at an angle. And these are the sign locations from the facade perspective, A, B, and C. And it's a a little bit hard to see here, but this is sixty square feet, sixty square feet. And I believe that's going to be fifty four square feet. We'll have a chart in in a moment, this is sign D, this is an existing sign. And they are proposing to add it into the master sign program. And uh here we have the actual signs. My apologies, that was fifty four inches, but twenty two square feet, these are the total sign areas for all four signs. And I do want to go back just a moment to point out that there is a fair amount of facade that is still visible, and the signs are in proportion to the facade. These are examples, so this is not part of the master sign program, but along with the master sign program, the applicant submitted the actual signs that they want approved. So this is an example of what it could look like. The project does propose on-premise sign area, which does make it categorically exempt to class eleven from CEQA. Uh staff recommends approval of the master sign program application.
Is there any reason that they didn't apply for a a podium sign of some sort, like where the Cypress tree is? Because it seems as though that perpendicular to the street would allow for them to get visibility in both directions. And I mean, I would certainly think that if you're going for a master sign plan, at least get approval to put something out there, whether you put it up right away or not, because it seems a logical place to have. I mean, just just a a thought, was there any discussion, or were there any restrictions that would prevent them from doing it? Is it too close to the sidewalk or something?
Uh there are not restrictions that would prevent them from doing that, this is what they requested.
Okay, fair enough. All right, any other questions, Staff?
Just, you said those were examples, but they had presented the actual signs, how come we're not seeing the actual signs?
Those are the actual signs that they, uh the two signs that they are proposing. But because we're dealing with the master sign program, and the master sign program explicitly deals with what can future signs look like. Um this is a sign that would comply with the master sign program.
So once we approve the master sign program, they can come to staff and change it up, as long as it's still within the parameters.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Okay, any other questions, Staff? Okay, um if the applicant here wants to share, you're welcome to come forward, state your name and share with us, if not, we'll move on to public comment.
Matt, but uh I'm here to get any questions.
Fair enough. All right, this is the time we have public comment, anybody in the public wishing to come forward, you have three minutes, state your name and share with us. Do we have any written in um emails or objections or anything like that, Staff? Dominique, do you know if we had anybody write in on this? Okay, so we're going to close the public comment period, back to the commission. Any objections, guys? I mean, it looks like a really good thing, and I, you know, I know Frank Conte is retired and on points taking over the the business, so I obviously got to update the signs and um it's nice to have a generator service here, since PG&E is not very reliable. And what, sorry, did I say that?
Through the chair?
Oh, yes, sir.
Let's take it easy on those retiring things.
I went to school with his older brother. That makes me old too.
Um I'm all for this. If you want me to make a motion, I will, but I'll leave it for somebody else.
Yeah, and and I just say, I I'm all about, let's support businesses and having the tools they need to make successful.
I mean, we accept, not to cut you off.
I second it.
M S P two thousand and twenty four dash oh one.
The second already came forward, so um any further discussion, seeing none, we're gonna, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, if anybody wishes to appeal this, an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of this decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal. Appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk, and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. All right, that concludes the matter, congratulations on your approval, and uh good luck with the 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 new business operations. Um items D, Master Sign Program Application M S P twenty twenty four dash oh two. Pacific Heights Plaza LLC, property owner and David Howe of the Forneen Realty Partners, applicant, request approval of a master sign program to allow for the construction of on-premises, on-premise signs at the multi-tenant Pacific Heights Plaza Shopping Center located at eleven fifty three to eleven seventy three Fremont Boulevard in the community commercial zoning district.
Thank you, Cher, my name is Eric Azrael, Assistant Planner, and I'll be presenting M S P twenty four oh two. Uh we have multiple, uh I'm sorry, on-premise, on-premise signs for a multiple tenant property, which does require a master sign program. This is a large multi-tenant property, this is a plaza, specifically Pacific Heights Plaza. This whole area, these are multiple APNs, as you would have seen in the header, but they are all one plaza with eleven tenant sites. Thank you. Uh just under fifty thousand square feet of floor area, we are in the community commercial zone, and a mix of uses nearby, primarily commercial, uh there is a hotel to the south, commercial to the north. Uh and if you go towards the west, there is some residential that continues. This application is to replace an existing master sign program. Uh existing master sign program had several items that were simply out of date and impossible for uh sign manufacturers to complete, and uh several other procedural uh blocks, so this master sign program updates the old one, as well as uh adding in the monument sign, which was not included in the original master sign program. So this is a fairly extensive master sign program, includes the sign design, the material, sign size, and location, and we will go through the highlights. Uh the meat of the master sign program is talking about well signs for each tenant. They are limited to sixty five percent of the tenant storefront. Does not allow painted signs, it does require that signs be of either single letters or script letters with logos being approved on a case-by-case basis. And it requires internal illumination of channel letters. Also draw your attention to the last line, acrylic faces with the vinyl overlay, that was an update of, uh it was an out outdated material of which no longer exists. And so that wasn't updated and there is a potential condition of approval related to that. Uh, this is the wall sign diagram. This is unchanged from the original. It simply shows where those letters can be posted at sixty five percent of the tenant linear distance. And here I want to point out the location of the monument sign, which we will see a picture of in a moment. Uh, this is an existing monument sign. What we're doing is bringing it into the master sign program so that sign permits can be issued. It is sixteen feet tall, which is above the fourteen feet limit. But that limit is without a master sign program. And uh the commission has the authority to override that limit. And this is what it looks like in situ. And I will note that it is proportional to a shopping center, which this is. And hence why it needs the extra height. This also will be uh categorically exempt because this is on premise signs. So it is categorized as exempt to class eleven from CEQA. That recommended condition of approval with the history of this master sign program where we had to come back and essentially do a whole new master sign program because of outdated materials, uh we recommend suggesting alternative materials of equivalent with better quality may be approved by the review authority in consultation with the property owner. That keeps the authority with the property owner as well as allows staff the ability to approve new materials. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this master sign program.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open this to public comment. Anybody who's not in the audience, because there's nobody in the audience, um either the applicant or the public can uh can come forward, seeing nobody's here, we're going to close that public comment, bring it back to the the board. Any further discussion? I I'm just going to say, I mean, this side's been there forever and I've never had any issue with it. So I don't have any issue with it now. And I think we're simply giving the owner and staff the tools to work with it. So um I so I I'm going to make a motion, or yes, go ahead.
One question. To staff, I know you've been trying to reduce the number of things that come to us. And I'm wondering, these seem pretty straightforward, at least the first two we've seen. Has there ever been consideration given to having that speed just approved within staff and not coming to the planning commission?
Yes, uh, these, all three of these actually, the one that will be coming next as well, they're over the size limit that is in the code.
Oh, okay.
And in order to go over that size limit, we have to come to planning commission.
But once we approve the master sign program, then any adjustments that are within those parameters can just be done over the counter with staff, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that that effectively accomplishes the goal that you're referring to um because we we approve the master program. Go ahead. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve MSP twenty twenty four dash zero two Pacific Heights Plaza property owner and David Howe of Forneen Realty Partners applicant.
Second.
Any for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have a unanimous approval. Um, and an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall be shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. Moving on to item E, master sign program application MSP twenty twenty four dash zero three Seaside Real Estate LLC property owner and Northwest Sign Inc. applicant request approval of a master sign program to allow for the construction of on premise signs at the automo automobile dealership located at seventeen twenty five Auto Center Parkway in the automotive regional commercial zoning district.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Eric Azrael and assistant planner, and I'll be presenting MSP twenty four oh three. And for this master sign program, we are dealing with on premise signs for an automobile automobile dealership in the automotive zone. And because it is an automobile use in the auto zone, it does require a master sign program. We are dealing with a large parcel here outlined in yellow. There are three dealerships on this parcel. We are dealing with the dealership in red, which is the Cadillac dealership. You can see just how large that parcel is, almost two hundred and four thousand square feet. Uh, each dealership does have its own master sign program. There is a master sign program for this site and for this dealership, but it doesn't fit the new signs. And all of the surrounding uses are either auto dealerships or auto based. We're going to have two wall signs that we'll talk about. They are in the same location as existing signs, similar sizes. I'll talk a little bit more about the sizes. There is a nonconforming monument sign. This was left off of the master sign program because it is nonconforming. It is located in the traffic safety visibility area. The uh owner can continue to change the face on this sign. Uh, and we do not need to have it as part of the master sign program for that. And that is the monument sign. As you'll see, it's fairly close to the road. And these are the existing wall signs, ones a little bit hard to see off to the top right. And then the certified service right there. And and this is a segment showing the same thing, the locations of those two signs. And the limits of those signs. So we are talking about five feet in height and about eleven and a half feet wide for this sign. Which I probably said that I had I have a missing a missing slide here. Uh, the this is a smaller than the current sign. We I do have a table that will show it as well, so we can go to the table. And the proposed limits for the canopy sign are also going to be smaller than the current sign. This is just to give a sense of the elevation and how similar they are in size, same location. For the identification sign, which is the one that we're referring to in the top right corner, the cat black symbol. The proposed limits are eleven feet eight inches wide and about five feet tall, sixty seven square feet in area. The existing sign is narrower but taller at almost seven feet in height, but only about ten feet wide. And the canopy sign is just smaller all around. It is both shorter and narrower. Similar to all the other masses in programs we have talked about, uh, this is for the allowance of on premise signs, which is exempt from CEQA category eleven. And have two recommended conditions of approval here. Uh, both of these are written into the resolution. There is a one minor correction. This first one is to uh go to back up a second over there. Both of them are to allow signs of the same size as the existing signs in the future. Should the uh dealership in the future say, we want those bigger signs back to prevent us from having to come back here before you. And as such, we took the largest of the width and height for each of the signs, whether they were the proposed sign or the existing sign and put them and the condition of approval. So this first one is for the sign location on the upper facade. Which is the Cadillac symbol that location. And there is a modification that's needed if we want to do this uh because there is a typo in the resolution. It says six feet and it should say seven. And then the second condition of approval is for the certified service. And this simply uses the extent of the existing sign. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the master sign program.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? None, okay. Um, anyone in the public wishing to comment, seeing nobody here, we're going to open and then close the public comment period. Um, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion? Okay, I move that we approve master sign program application MSP twenty twenty four dash zero three with the adjustment to include seven feet on, I think it was the height of the um emblem portion of the Cadillac sign so that they have maximum flexibility.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? All right. Uh, unanimous approval. Um, an appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of the decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal appeals are to be addressed to the council and shall be filed with the city clerk and appeal shall be accompanied by the required filing fee. All right, any reports from commissioners, item number six?
Just wanted to know from staff, is anything happening to the seaside uh the old seaside market? Because I know we passed that.
I know that there's been some, um, there's still been some conversations between the developer and the landowner. Um, we did just administratively uh extend the um the permit by an additional year, so which they did request. So I know they're still talking and working on it, but um we have not seen a building permit application come in. So at this point, they're still the same point in the process. They've been approved at planning and not submitted to building.
Good. The old building on Fremont and Broadway that stored the Quonset Hut living thing?
Metier, yes.
What's going on there?
They um they were, they got an administrative approval uh under the old use permit for some interior and exterior work. So they're they're doing, they're basically doing a facelift. You know, so some ou- outdoor, you know, spruce ups, you know, redoing the interior. Uh, I think they're changing and adding some seating for the taqueria inside, you know.
Yeah. And then whatever happened with the old Nurses' Barrack project?
We have an application that's been submitted. Um, it's still being reviewed by staff. It has not been deemed complete yet. Um.
So maybe am I confusing that one? What's the one that we approved? The one that?
It was Nurses' Barracks, the Suyuk Parker Flats project.
Okay.
Uh, the revised plans are are significantly different.
Oh, I got you. So they're not going to make rehab the existing buildings or something?
Correct. It involves demolishing the existing building and building.
New applicant or new applicant?
Um, same owner.
Okay. All right, I remember they were trying to sell it and so.
Yeah.
With the approvals in it.
So they're, I guess, the potential buyer has submitted the application and as I said, it's it's under review.
They still have a buyer that's engaged then?
Yes.
Okay, and then um did we also um get the Ace Hardware thing through?
Last I heard, um they wanted uh documentation once the third, so council adopted the zoning um zoning map update. Um, they asked for documentation once the thirty days passed for the ordinance to take effect, which we provided to them and that was about week and a half ago now. I have not heard anything since.
Okay, right. So I guess what we've done is we moved to item number seven, which is reports from staff, just thank you for the record. And any other questions, staff? All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so just real quick, um, we do not have any uh next meeting would be August twenty eighth. We have no items for that date. Um, however, we do have items for the September eleventh hearing. So I just wanted to do kind of a early quorum check. Um, are people going to be able to make it on September eleventh?
Sure. But if you have a twenty eighth, I can't, I'm not here.
We don't have a twenty eighth, yeah. All right, that's it for me.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.